Yeah, it's all a coach.
Uh-uh.
I want to introduce.
I see Jack.
That's what I thought.
You guys know what building you're gonna be in?
Yeah.
Hey, cool. Make sure we say that.
How you doing? Good.
Matt, we're on video, right?
Absolutely. Um, tonight, just want to remind everyone, before we get started, we are on video. Um, you don't see the camera guy in here, but the machines at the back, they actually are came over here.
I speak.
Nah, hang on there.
So, everyone can make sure your mic's on and just speak up.
Welcome, everybody, to, uh, the Penn State Public School District's, uh, business meeting for Monday, August 20, 2018. Appreciate you coming out. We'll start the meeting with, uh...
Budget leaders.
We constitute the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, indivisible, liberate, and universal.
Yes, uh, Mrs. Ising, here. Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Bill Leonard.
Uh, it's you.
Here.
Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Matarazo is not with us. Uh, Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 11th meeting?
Good move.
Second.
Question.
Question being called, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Information, Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Um, gonna be an exciting week. The first day of schools this Thursday, so we have everything pretty much prepared. Um, last-minute changes, last couple days in service. Today was our kickoff in service, and, uh, we focused on our board goals. We focused on some different information we received from Mr. Karazia, from the homeless, the changes of the laws, um, different grant opportunities, but it was an excellent day and it was a good beginning. So, we are excited for the school year and for all the kids to come. So, not too many, um, phone calls from the bus postcards we sent out, and we also sent out the prospectus, and I think it's gonna be sent out later this month in the paper, which we always count on, so I appreciate that. So, but tonight, I do have a visitor who's gonna actually be our presentation, and it's Mr. Joe Gatus.
Okay, um, I have the fellows here who have hired and trained. They have all of their training going through the schools, they work inside our school. Uh, so, I'm gonna let each one come up, everybody introduce themselves, and give you a little bio box, where they're coming from and what they do. A quick question for you, Joe. Can you explain to me that training, what you're talking about? What training exists right now that you're applying to these guys?
Phil, you just interrupted. Phil, you missed it last week. He actually gave us a handout that had the complete manual that they train to.
My apologies, proceed.
So, you could probably get that, but it's very extensive.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No. Different laws and what they do in the school, and what you can do with kids and what you can't do. Okay, well, my apologies. Okay, that's fine, no problem. So, we'll start with Tom. He's gonna be at Sunrise, Tom West. Level Green. I mean, I'm sorry, Level Green.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not much of a speaker, I keep it short. Uh, my name is Tom West, I'm 59-years-old, I'm from, uh, McKeesport. Uh, this past December, I retired from the city of McKeesport Police Department as a police officer after 24 years of service. Uh, the first four years were part-time service, the last 20 years were of a full-time officer. Uh, prior to that, I worked six years as a, uh, part-time police officer for different, different, uh, communities such as for Salesboro, Elizabethboro. I've worked a total of 30 years as a police officer. Uh, I look forward to working with the staff and students of Penn Trafford. Uh, I'll be working at the Level Green Elementary School, and that's me.
Have you met the principal yet?
No, sir, I'm going tomorrow morning. Uh, Joe told me that, I guess they're having, uh, some sort of, there's the teachers and everybody will be there.
Each school's doing their in-service tomorrow, so they're gonna go to each school tomorrow and meet the principal and staff.
And why do you wanna do this job?
Well, like I said, I'm retired, just something else to do, get tired of sitting around the house, and I think it's a job that I'm qualified for, that I feel that I can do.
And you're a protector.
I, um, I'll put it to you this way. If anything would ever happen to one of the students or to their, uh, staff there, it would only be because I could not fulfill my duty as the officer.
Nothing will happen to them as long as I'm there, as far as I'm concerned. I, as the saying goes, I'll take the bullet first.
Um, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, McKeesport School District's had their own police force for quite a while, am I right?
Do, they have, uh, an officer from the department assigned to the school.
Oh, is that how that goes?
Yes, sir. He's a school resource officer. He's, uh, actually a, um, McKeesport City Police Officer. He's assigned to the school.
Oh, that, I, uh, for ballgames, I've seen him there.
Well, I mean, well, the, the police officers are the ones who work the school, uh, for, like, in overtime detail. They work the, um, I guess you, you wanna call it security for the school, but the, uh, police officers are the ones who do that, yes, sir.
They had their, well, the reason I said that, 'cause they had their police officer, you know, uniforms on, and I assumed, have you, have you done that kinda work before? Have you worked with them?
W- at, at the, the football games or not?
Yes.
Oh, many years, yes, sir.
Okay, you've covered that.
Yes, sir.
All right, so if we needed you here for big games, then you are available.
That'd be up to, uh, Mr. Gatus.
Okay, just, I just wanted to be, make sure we know the flexibility involved, all right?
Yeah, it'd be up to Mr. Gatus, too.
Okay, so just work with something like that. Okay, just thank you, I just wanted to be aware, 'cause I know at McKeesport, they have, uh, ballgames there, they're well manned.
Yes, sir.
Everything's under control.
Yes, sir, we, we try.
I think they have dogs, too, am I correct?
Yes, sir, we have, uh, five K-, I still say we.
The counselor has dogs, has one dog.
They have, uh, five canine officers.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's vital. That sends a big message, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Eric Goss. Uh, I'll be at McCullough Elementary School. 24 years of military service, combat veteran, Bronze Star Sniper and, uh, Safety Officer. Also, I picked up a degree with University of Alabama, equivalent to a master's degree in safety. I have, uh, graduated from Clarion University, graduated back in 1988, uh, graduated with a, uh, degree in, uh, wow, what the heck was my degree in? Hey, that was 88, and that was a while ago. Was that 30?
That's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Engleis and, uh, myself were both Clarion graduates, too.
Oh, thank you. All right, that's awesome. Golden Eagles. I'm currently a major in the United States Army Reserves. Uh, again, 24 years' service, active duty as well as reserves, and I'm going into pre-retirement as of right now, and I look forward to serving the school, the children, and the staff at the schools.
Would you like to address your own degree?
I also conduct military funerals for the United States Army. My team and I, on an average, bury between 1600 to 1800 of our veterans every year in the six counties of southwestern Pennsylvania, and I've been doing that for 10 years.
Well, thank you for your service.
It's an honor, thank you.
Yeah, why, why do you want this job?
I am a protector. Born and bred and raised, it is in my blood, that's all I know, and I believe in, in keeping the kids safe, they're innocent, as well as the staff at the school. That is my primary objective, and, and, uh, that is my goal. It's an honor. Thanks for having me, thank you.
Welcome, myself.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Robert Frank. I use my middle name Wesley, you can call me Wes. Uh, I'm from West Mifflin, and, uh, like Eric, I do, uh, the military funerals as well with him. I've been on the team for, uh, about eight years. I've got, uh, 30 years of, uh, military experience, actually going into my 30th year right now between, um, active-duty Army Reserve. I've got four combat tours, I've got two Bronze Stars, I've got a bio, um, in there as well. So, um, I feel that, uh, protecting is in my blood. Um, one of the reasons why I came on board is, um, trying to transition out of the Army life into civilian life, and, uh, I feel that, uh, providing a safe environment for students to learn is, is key to success in the environment that we, uh, live in today, so, uh, I appreciate the opportunity that you folks are giving me.
Excuse me, what building did you, I'm sorry?
Oh, Sunrise, I'm sorry, left that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. What's your body rank?
Uh, I'm currently still in the Army Reserve. I am a Command Sergeant Major. I have a reserve unit down in Knoxville, Tennessee, and, uh, my, uh, every month, I've gotta go down there and, uh, do some training, so.
Every month?
Every month. I've been doing it for the last two years, so, long story short, when you're, when you become a Command Sergeant Major, and it's your initial, um, uh, tour as a Command Sergeant Major, you have to, you have to ob-, you're obligated to do 36 months, and you can't retire, you can't, um, you know, drop your retirement paperwork, as we say in the Army, uh, because you've made a, it's a verbal contract with the Army. Even though you sign a, a contract, there's a verbal agreement that you're not gonna leave, and, uh, so, I'm in my, um, last year of that, so I'm at, at a crossroads. I'm either gonna retire as a Command Sergeant Major, or I'm gonna, uh, possibly move on to another position, so.
Would that interfere with your, um, time at Sunrise?
No, um, Joe and I have discussed, uh, my military obligations, and, um, there were, if the times I'm not there, there'll be a backfill. So, currently, um, right now, I plan on leaving Friday night, driving down to Knoxville, and I'll come back s- late Sunday, Sunday morning, and that's typically what I've done for the last two years, so.
That's what we did last time we saw it.
Yeah.
Sleep.
Yeah, it's an eight-hour drive, it's not horrible. Uh, like I said, I've done it for the last two years, so.
Knoxville's a nice part of the world.
It's a really nice area, and, uh, if you're a UT fan, I mean, they love their football down there, um, they're not much into their professional sports team, 'cause it's on the other side of the state, and, um, so, they're hoping that they're gonna have a good football year with the new coach that they hired, so we'll see what happens.
I, I worked for Alcoa for 18 years, did a lot of traveling to Knoxville.
Yeah, I actually was just, there was a time when I was trying to convince my wife to move down there, because, uh, the first year, I just loved it, but, uh...
It was a co-, Coach Fulmer coming back to be AD, you know, right, or something like that, how's that go?
What's that?
Coach Fulmer came back, the ex-coach Fulmer came back, took the AD job, the...
I think so, yeah.
Had her new coach, and they're high expectations, and the Coon Dogs ready to start doing some howling, and, uh...
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be, uh, they're gonna be paying the former coach for 10 years.
Yes, they are.
So, they owe him a lot of money, so...
Yeah, they, uh, he got a big smile on his face.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
Johnny Majors is from UT.
UT.
Johnny Majors is from there.
Yeah.
Very, they're very critical, I mean, you know, most people are very critical.
For Heisman Trophy winner replay University of Tennessee. Lost out to Paul Horni.
Uh, I do have a, uh, bachelor's degree from Indiana University of Pennsylvania. I believe I left that out, um, I've got some other, other courses as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Daniel Rogirio. I'll be stationed down there at, uh, Harrison Park School. Um, I've been in security for, or armed security for five years. Altogether, I have almost 10 years in security. I was a housing officer for the city of Pittsburgh for those last five years. Uh, been a volunteer fireman for 12, so I wanted to get this job, 'cause I consider myself a protector of life and property, from both my volunteer job and my security job, and it's something I always wanted to do. Um, I'm living out in North Owen area, so I'm close by if anybody, if anything's needed, like for games or any kinda special events, regardless, providing he, he clears it, I'll be around if needed. Uh, Pittsburgh Housing Authority, Homewood North, Northview Heights, um, it's now Skyline Terrace, a lot of you might know it as Almore Square and Garfield Commons.
Did you carry a weapon during those five years?
Yes, sir, I did.
So, out of the fi-, out of the 10 years that you were an armed security guard?
Uh, five years armed security, sir.
So, it was five years out of the 10 that you actually carried the weapon, and that was for the city of Pittsburgh?
Yes.
Thank you. Were you rained through the city of Pittsburgh?
Yes, I did. Um, they had me working in the rough neighborhoods there, so. Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
Did you have to wear body armor for that job?
Yes, I did. Yeah, it was mandatory. Yes.
Welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Name is Dwayne San Antoine, actually from Indiana County. I was trained by a Department of Corrections. I did eight years in the, uh, Indiana County Jail. Um, I'm trained in IPC, CPR, AED, First Aid, also trained in PRIA, I'm a mandatory reporter for child abuse. Uh, I've had CPI training, basically anything that deals with corrections. Uh, I worked four years, um, at Homer City High School, actually doing armed security for them. I did a one-year armed security for Salzburg, and, let me see, I did three years, beer festivals, and I've also done two years at, um, for a marathon called Standing Stone. Also with that, I also assist Indiana, the Indiana County Police in IU Patty's Day, and if you guys ever heard of that, it's a big thing in Indiana, a lot of arrests and drugs, but I assist in that. I also secured Lieutenant Governor Mike Stack. Uh, he came to Homer City to do a, um, seminar. We actually acted as his bodyguard there. Um, and currently, I do, I've done, I'm on three years at Chestnut Ridge right now, do, I do all their weddings and all their sororities, and I'll be at Penn Middle.
Nice to see you. Uh, what, uh...
Indiana County, on Hood School Road.
You stated you had some, um, armed security time, how many years of armed security?
Total armed security, probably about eight.
I was gonna ask, is, you guys have same weapons, or they, you have a, a weapon of choice, or they have their own choice? They have certified weapons, that's the only weapon, they're allowed to carry, and whatever they... That's a law. So, these are all recent certifications, or they're under the, the ongoing certifications? Yes, um, I think his might be the oldest.
Yeah.
But, um, we'll have a record of what they have, and they also have... So, we'll know what kinda gun that they have. Any MSOPs that we will consider, you can pull when you can't, all that's... So, when one of these gentlemen's off, do you have a staple? We will have a replacement, um, keep the God, if he's gonna come tonight that we have, that's gonna be replaced. Somebody already had it prior, and you'll meet them at the next meeting. Those are my first, and the second question is, is, are they all gonna wear the same standard uniform? Yes, they're all gonna wear, uh, polo shirts with a badge. Uh, safety resource officer. Right. And that'll be their, they'll be every day, they wear the same thing, correct? Everybody's the same. I assume it'll be lettered on the back? No, there'll just be a badge on the front. We were kind of... A resource officer, they're not, they're not gonna come?
Tonight?
Well, we don't. I think we should have them come.
I've heard that before.
I'm, yeah, I'm, trust me.
Yeah, I hear you.
Does it make sense of security on the back?
Geez. Hey, Joe, the backups, in case some ways they're out for illness or family issues or something like that, are they also gonna be trained, uh, experienced officers also, the people you have?
Yeah, they all have 235 cards.
You feel in for them when, when they cannot be there?
Yeah.
You, you personally?
Yeah. I'm always around.
We see Joe a lot. We do, we see Joe a lot.
So, basically, Joe, somebody calls in the morning, 'cause they're sick, you'll be there. Won't be a building that does not have a guard in every day.
That's my, that's my, no, no vacancies.
No, no vacancies.
Um, I have a question. This, this is a generic question, ran into security officers, whatever I was coming in. Um, um, would they be substitutes?
No, they're strictly for outside work.
I understand.
They have nothing to do with it. In the building, you gentlemen know who you'll be reporting to, correct? Principals. Said they're gonna meet them tomorrow.
You, you, you arrive a half hour before time and leave half hour after time? How's, how's your timeframe on that, Joe?
They're gonna be at the elementary, they're gonna be 8:30, 3:00. The buses start coming in at, uh, 8:30.
8:45.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be there at 8:30, and they'll be done at 3:00, 3:00. If we run into a problem, we might have to change, we're gonna see.
How about the middle schools, and how about the high school?
Same, same. High school, you have an SRO officer. High school, as of right now, we have a resource officer. The middle school, I'm not sure.
Trafford Middle, we have an, we have an SRO at Trafford Middle as well.
Reference in Penn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Trafford.
You might have said, it's which school are you assigned to?
Penn Middle.
Yep. So, we'll find out if Penn Middle will... If we run into a problem, we can change it, we can work it out. We'll make it work. We identified in the building where each one of their offices are gonna be at their location. Have you guys worked that out?
Yeah, we've been working on that with the principals. Uh, they have a station area, but we want them to be, um, rotation visible.
And, 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 another question, the weapons will always be on you guys, they'll never be taken off, correct?
They're invisible, correct?
Well, if visible is the principal wants, that's, it's gonna be, like, I would leave a little bit discretion up to how they wanna use their... No, I think it should be visible. I don't wanna let them have a little decision on that part of it.
And you never know, also, right now, it's, I suppose, a local decision. You don't know what the state's gonna come down with. They might come down with something else with weapons concealed, open carry, um, but you never, right now...
Because right now, there, there are no such restrictions. You just simply have to be properly trained, licensed, under the law, and, uh, if, um, if the, uh, officer is an employee of the district, they have to be approved by the court, if they're gonna, and they have to be authorized by the court to have arrest authority or not, uh, to, um, be armed for it.
Do you know, I just, a question, I've been kinda falling a little bit, you know, if, uh, did they extend those authorities anymore that they were talking about to the, uh, security people with their authorities, what they can and can't do, their arrest authorities? Say, that's, that was under discussion, too. I don't know if they've, uh, state legislator worked on that.
That's not, my understanding is that that's not been changed. What, uh, what the new laws provided for was to be able to, uh, contract with a thirty-party, a third-party contractor for individuals that can provide, um, this type of security. Uh, but you still have the ability, it did not negate the fact that you could have SROs or have your own school police. That would, again, be, be approved by the court, so, uh, my understanding is, is that you have the, the flexibility to decide how you wanna approach security within the school. You can utilize all three, uh, methods, or however you wanna do it. The only key is that you have to have that one individual who oversees, uh, the safety and security, uh, programs and everything within the district.
And clearly so stay, that would be Mr. Gados.
I'm sorry?
That's Mr. Gados, who oversees it?
No.
Okay, who oversees it?
I think, Bill, I think it's a, a discussion that we're gonna have to have further down the road, there's some things that we still need to get in place.
Okay, that's, that's key. Yeah, that's key. Anyway, thank you very much.
Sure. I, I, I just mentioned to, uh, Dr. Harris, Joe, you wouldn't have any issue with, uh, with photographs being taken of these gentlemen and put, uh, on the, on the website near the, on the school district's website for the school, so, so the parents know what, what these, what these gentlemen look like? You guys have any issue with that? I think that's a good idea, that way the parents know.
Nope.
Yeah, that way they... The CNN, like, okay, he's a good guy, not an impossible. Yeah, so they, they might, yeah, I just think it's just more visibility. The last thing, Joe, with regards to clearances, I would assume these guys all have their clearances? We need to, we need those on file, do we not, Matt?
What?
We would need those on file.
Yeah, we always get copies of everything. We do that with our bus company and our, um...
We would have a copy, I'm sure you'll go get one.
Aramark.
I'll have this right here, too. All their files will be there. But as of today, all those clearances are up to date. All you have to do is... They're all there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Well. I would say, I say you guys don't have to stay for the rest, it's nice to meet you, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hold on, once, hold on, gentlemen, why don't you guys do a quick loop in here, and just so you guys can meet all the, uh, board members yourselves, introduce yourself again, just inside loop.
Inside.
We have our... System down. I, I, I'm, I'm... You too, Joe. I'm a freshman. I'm strong. We know. Don't take your hand out, okay? Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 I won't have any, I'll pass it back to you. And actually, that's all the information I had tonight, and I will, um, I know some of you asked to have this Trafford SRO officer next to me, and I'll do that. So, thank you. I would, I would, uh, my suggestion would be to include all, all the Trafford SRO and the, uh, high school SRO.
Sure.
Pictures, uh, uh, you know, if we're doing to do these, gentlemen, you should have
SRO pictures. If we're going to do these, gentlemen, you should have them all.
Oh, absolutely. That's a good idea.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. So, recognition of visitors. There's nobody signed up. Treasury's report may have a motion to approve the Treasury report and the high school extracurricular fund report.
Motion.
Second.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, and we'll move to payment of bills. May have a motion to approve the payment of bills for the month of August 2018.
Motion. Second.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Joe, in the old business. The old business, we'll go, we did have a brief executive session prior to the season meeting. We discussed personnel matters, including assistant business administrator, contract negotiations, potential litigation. We also received information about air mark partnership review and construction repair updates going around district wide. All right, new business, athletics and extracurricular. Dr. Costo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do have a few items. Under appendix B in your book, we have a move to employ the athletics and extracurricular personnel for the 2018-19 school year, as presented to the board. salaries will be determined in accordance with the negotiated agreement. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the list of volunteer coaches is presented to the board. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34-151 and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director.
Second.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, Dr. Costo. Budget and finance, Mr. Stovar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the Penn Trafford School District's contributions to the area libraries for 2018-19, as follows. Penn Area Library, $3,584. Trafford Community Public Library, $1,536.
Question. Question being called for. This is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the CWCTC settlement agreement and release. A copy of the agreement will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Question.
Question being called for. This is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Buildings and ground safety, Mr. Dallas Leonard.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I do a few items. First, I'd like to move to approve list of substitute custodians for 2018-19 school year. Copy of it, which will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion to approve borrowing expenditures for change orders at the Penn Middle School, exterior insulation system project, and all the Warrior Center, replacing hyphes and dense glass in extra, in extra areas, that cost $4,650. Direct apply over brick ground entrance at east elevation at a cost of $2,960. Repairs at east elevation area C at a cost of $5,930. And remove and replace the walkway ramp to Warrior Center at a cost of $35,497.
Second.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to motion to approve the school resource officer program agreement for 2018-2019.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to move to approve the rate of 22.65 per hour for each of five armed security guards from the public safety security.
Question. Question.
Question being called for. You have a question?
I actually have.
All right, Mr. Leonard.
That, is that a, is that their hourly rate?
The gentleman get paid eighteen an hour, but then, the company bills us 22.65 an hour, we have to cover their eighteen plus whatever they have to pay for taxes, and there is some markup, too.
You're welcome. All right, question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relation, negotiation, trans...
I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Dr. Costo.
Matt, or Scott, for the contract with the officers, it's only for when kids are in school?
Correct.
So, for example, if during vacation, break, whatever, they're only paying them for when they're...
One hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
And I actually took off the Act eighty days, too, so we're 176.
Okay, so just when they're actually in the building. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Employee relation, negotiation, transportation, Miss Sissing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of bus drivers and substitutes as presented by first student for 2018-2019 school year. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Miss Sissing. Food service, Mr. Nemec.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of cafeteria personnel for the 2018-19 school year, as presented by Airmark Education. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adopt the following resolution by the Board of School Directors for the 2018-19 school year with regard to the free and reduced lunch program. Be it resolved that the Penn Trafford School District agrees to participate in the national lunch, national school lunch program, and to receive commodities donated by USDA, and accepts the responsibility for providing free and reduced-priced meals in accordance with the Pennsylvania Department of Education guidelines to eligible children in all schools under the district's jurisdiction. Penn Trafford High School will not participate in the national school lunch program during the 2018-19 school year.
Question.
All right, question being called for. This is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'd also move to approve Turner Dairy as the milk supplier for the 2018-19 school year.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the following administration designated official writers professional personnel Penn Travis School District for 2018-19 school year, as listed, and please add Kerry Hetrick or AD, because he evaluates all our coaching staff.
Question.
All right, question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the teacher assignments for 2018-19 school year as recommended by the administration. A copy of those assignments will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting. Administration is further authorized to notify teachers of the permanent assignments in accordance with negotiated agreement.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following student handbooks in 2018-19 school year as presented to the board. A copy of each handbook will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting. The Penn Trafford High School, the Penn Trafford Middle School, and the Penn Trafford Elementary Schools.
Second.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the substitute teaching and support personnel for 2018-19 school year. Copy will be filed with official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following personnel. New employees contingent upon all receipt of all necessary documentation except Act 34-151, 114 waivers, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days, and please add Caitlin Pratt. That's listed.
Second.
Caitlin Pratt would be actually for the E, for the student learning assistant at Harrison Mark.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to issue professional contractors of following courses with Section 11058 of the school law of Pennsylvania. These teachers have satisfied completing three years of teaching at Penn Travis School District. Caitlin Borden, Alexandra Christopher Ferretti, Tara Gweri, Kristy Hartman, and Colleen Jones.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Quick interruption, all five outstanding. Very happy we hired them. I can't believe it's three years. It's real, I can't believe it, because it's just seems like yesterday.
Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Move to approve the following request, as listed.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to the following retirement resignations, Kathy Preziozi and Thomas Chaplik.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to accept the following resignations, as listed.
Second.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to approve the following textbook for 2018-19 school year, which are in a textbook budget according to textbook cycle, as listed.
Question being called for. This is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, we are going to temporarily postpone of number eleven until next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Petrucci. Well done, well done. Policy, public relations, legislative title two, Dr. Costo.
I do have one item. Move to accept and file the minutes of the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on June fourth of 2018.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to give final approval to the following board policy. A copy of this policy will become an official part of the minutes of this meeting. Eight twenty-seven, conflict of interest.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to tenderly...
Motion carried. Sorry, Dr. Costo, I'm going to slag him behind.
Move to tenderly approve the following board policies and administrative regulations, as listed.
Second.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
One last item. Move to rescind the following board policy, eight ten point one, drug slash alcohol testing covered drivers.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.